Keep it as short as possible, that will be ideal.
So we can keep the meeting short. I'm A.T.B., I'm the executive director for Main Street Brookfield. Main Street is a 501(c)(3). We are a preservation-based economic development corporation. So I want to share with the board, the council, our annual report. And the backside is some of the stats. This is what we need to report on a return on investment to Indiana Main Street. And Indiana Main Street in turn gives the information to Main Street America. So our numbers hit up at the national level. If you have any questions, Richard, ask me. I do have some other reports if anybody in the audience would like to add them. The information that's on the annual report is the L-CHM. It's based upon our reporting area, which is basically Main Street and then Fourth Street, behind the courthouse. So this is not our program area, this is our reporting area. This is how we keep our pulse on the economy and the health, economic health of our commercial district. Okay?
Do you know what the change is from year to year? Do you guys track that?
As far as... What change?
Just like thirteen projects in 2022 compared to 2021, 2020. Does that suddenly increase?
Right, so we've been turning in annual reports every year. So just with the amount growing back and getting that 2022 is very important for us because we're preserving Main Street. Our Main Street goal is to leverage two million dollar investment in the size of the Purgatory Main Street program to six to ten thousand million. And so this is our base year. And to be able to show that we do have successfully leveraged the money through both public and private investment. So to answer your question, I don't have it on top of my head, but we do have it back in the office. And most of the public projects was the county. There were two for the town and the other eleven were county projects. I mean specifically the courthouse and the annex and the security. Okay? So that... Right?
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, well, that's one topic. The other topic is the accreditation business. And we, Main Street Brookfield, wanted to thank the towns to support in actually being there for the Purgatory Main Street pilot program. Is that we agree, Main Street, we to level up from Indiana credit to Main Street to national credit to Main Street. If we, we will find out at the end of this month, if we were successful in that. And if that happens, Main Street Brookfield will be, White Hart, the smallest national credit to Main Street in Indiana. Okay?
Can you share with all of you what that means? Just...
Yeah. All right, no. So I am doing it all today and what it gets. So there's communities in Indiana, the whole purpose of Main Street is to work with the community that they're in, in partnering, in improving quality of life, and improving the economy of the downtown four district. Because if it's a vibrant, strong downtown four district, then that leads to a very good vibrant and strong county and area that they're in. So there's different levels. And there's the Indiana credit to Main Street, the thirty-three levels. The middle one is the Indiana credit to Main Street. And when you go up to the national level, that provides us with more opportunity for grants, that provides us with more resources and information to be able to just increase our capacity, our knowledge, in how to do things that are in the interest of the community. Right? I want to emphasize that this is the reporting area, but we service all of Brookfield. And we have even been involved with businesses that are in the county. So this is where our focus is. Okay?
When will we know?
The end of, the end of February. Okay?
Thank you. Next is the CCMG bid opening. The first bid is from Paul Roeb, this is for the Fourth, Fifth, and Fourth Street, and then Franklin Avenue from Third Street to Fifth Street paving project. The total project is, I'm sorry, the total grant is $198,000 from the state, and then Brookfield's match is $66,000. So it looks like they bid, Paul Roeb bid $225,597. I guess that's it, right? Just one thought. Okay? Next is from De La Mira. Looks like Progress Street and Fifth Street. Okay, there's four that comes here, Progress Street, Fourth and Fifth. This talks about Fourth Street, this talks about Fifth Street, that's not a good...
Do they have a total?
Well, hold on, Franklin Avenue is Third Street to Fifth Street is $61,241.75.
ABCD did, so they'll just have this. Right, do they have this? That's where they put their total, but their breakdown should be on the...
I thought it was just two.
And then this is their, this is theirs. Their sheets, but their total is on the $496, so you could just read the $496, but there's four, should be four, I don't know, sheets, like ABCD.
But we're not doing Fourth Street or Fifth Street. We're only doing Franklin and Progress Street. Franklin, Fourth and Fifth.
No, so this is Progress Street from Fourth to Fifth.
Yeah. Oh, this is on Fourth Street to Progress, this is on Fifth to Progress.
Right, so there should be four on...
That wasn't on the CCMG grant. Okay, sorry, my bad, everybody.
That's all right.
So the total is...
This was Rose, right?
Yeah. Oh, no, sorry.
So this is Rose.
This is Rose.
Okay. But that $496 at the top should have the totals on it.
That's Rose. Rose, this is all Rose, yeah.
So, yeah.
So it's...
And then their $496 should have a total of...
So, okay, sorry.
This is in there.
This is on there. So there's four pieces of paper, nothing on top.
That's the bid. This is probably what you want there.
Okay. Sorry about that. Paul Roeb, $235,715.70. And the last bid is in the current sense.
Paul Roeb was $235, I'm here as $225.
Two, $225 is a rose.
Okay.
The second, from there. I had to look for that. $235.15. Current sense, it says grand total $239,684. Yeah, $239,684, current sense.
I'll make a motion to take under advisement until next meeting.
I'll start with the motion.
Okay. All opposed. Motion passed, we'll take that under advisement. Next is the Franklin County Community Society Street collection request for September 16th, with the randy of the farm in Indiana.
I'll make a motion to give that motion.
This is on Main Street, is up there, this is on Main Street collection?
Street collection, yes.
Also six and...
Someone named Six and Mark, maybe two, if you do get it?
Six and Mark.
No.
She just says, "An annual community society board grant," there's no...
When he says, "Take which streets they're allowed to," do you prefer intermission?
It doesn't matter to me. I mean, people have them on Main Street quite often, and they usually are down, as we have most six and more too, because it's pretty popular in this section.
Is there a second?
What was the motion?
The motion was to approve the paperwork that they want, Bill.
They didn't specify, I guess.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, what is the motion?
You said the motion was to where they want to go.
Oh, I just said I would like to accept the motion as ordered, yeah.
Okay, so the motion fails, do you feel like a second? Is there any other motion for the...
I'll make a motion to approve the request and to limit, to two instructions on Main Street and the corner of Sixth and Middle, they would choose to disown.
Is that a new second?
Is there?
Is that four or your second?
I need those original motions, it would clear.
All fair. Earl said that, all fair. All those, motion passed. For two instructions on Main Street and Sixth and Middle, if so, would be on September 16th. Next is the annual financial report.
So in front of you, you have the financials that I uploaded into Gateway for the state board of council, the annual financial report. In years past, I used to bring the completed report to council prior to submission to Gateway. This year, or me, is earlier. So I would like, with your permission, to be able to email you the final report prior to submission, so you have a chance to review it.
So are these numbers then not finalized yet?
I'm sorry, those numbers are finalized, but there's other information I need to upload, grant information, debt information, capital assets, that sort of thing. So I'm sorry, this is just the financial portion, and everything else will be submitted with it. But that's all I can print out for you currently. That was completed.
So just so the public knows, for 2022, it's like we, our beginning balance in January 1st was for cash, our beginning cash balance was, sorry, 400 and, I'm sorry, $4,132,538.80. And our ending cash balance, December 31st, was $4,977,705.70. So I moved that we allowed you to email us the column for, will she submit it?
I'm sorry, no motion.
All fair, I mean, any session, I'm sorry. No. All fair. Let's pause here, motion passed. Next is the motor equipment. For the ball horse.
Well, I, I thought that you had talked to him.
I did.
Okay, I was just kind of waiting for you.
No, you can go then.
Well, I, I don't know exactly what mower. Okay, but... There's a seventy-two inch scag turf, zero turn mower, that has a lot of hours on it. According to Brett, he'd like to trade it in as a tractor for, it was a new sixty-ep zero-turn mower, traded value from somewhere was $3,500. The cost of the new mower is $9,199, which would mean the remaining cost, we would pay would be $5,699. Or I would like to, to do that out of his equipment budget.
And he has that in there?
Yes. I'm sorry.
So Brett told me that this mower is a smaller mower. He's got two rough mowers, one is really big, this one's a little bit smaller. It's the only one that they have to go around trees and around rough areas. If they use a bigger mower, it'll make it bald, or was that, so, scalpel, thank you, scalpel. So this is one of two rough mowers that he has that he wants to keep in the same type of mower that Brett has, because what Brett does in the street department is he, he does tradings before it dies, because it just requires too much maintenance and too much time to keep it going. And so Brett wants to start that same program here with this mower, because it's worth $3,500, just, he was very happy to know that that was the trading value of this one that he has.
I'll make a motion to approve this request, and the current mower, versus the mower assorted, for example.
So this is a quote for, I'm sorry, I'm saying the numbers. The given order is $9,199,000, which trading at $3,500 equals $5,699. Is there a second?
I'll start with the motion.
All fair. All opposed. Motion passed. Next is the Midwest Data Inc. contract. So Midwest Data Inc. is the contractor that the county has, and the county pays about $7,500 a year to have Ramsey support them in terms of IT support and advice and consulting. And he also helps them get all IT equipment at discounted rates. And so I asked him to drop a contract to discuss with the board, to see if he wanted, if how the board felt about employing him for the town. I think it'd be a real asset to, especially with the move, to make sure we're all set up there and give us advice on when it's a good idea to switch out with IT equipment that we're at today, and that we have all our cybersecurity on it and all of our patches with our software. Right now, there's no one in the town really does that, at least in forty-five. So this contract is a twelve-month contract, and it would be for $1,166.25 a year. And then the onsite support would be $99 an hour, which is the same we charge the county. And then the in-house support and fibers removal would be $75 an hour. So NDI takes care of, I think he said, three, three counties. Franklin, I'm not sure, but three surrounding counties, so he's used to handling municipalities.
So we, excuse me, we can't handle that right now.
So currently, we've been working with great, great advice, deep computers for our stuff. So I know we have worked with Brett and Tiddy, the new desktop tower down there for him. He's been in our office, doing some work, I think he's also been with the golf course, helping them with some setup, so, but we don't have an annual contract with him, it's on a case-by-case basis. He comes in and does whatever we need, and he builds us.
So do you, what is your opinion of this?
I'm fine with it, I'm...
You, what?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if the county uses them, I mean, that's, I trust that. I also think the police department uses them too, because they don't use Midwest Data.
The sheriff does, so they pass, they assist them, so that's why he goes over there.
I'll make a motion to extend it. Who are you? I'll say, what was the motion?
All fair. All opposed. Okay, so I just sent this, right?
On that last page, I didn't catch this, but whether or not third bullet, it's not about the jury yet.
I'm sorry, is it the one?
In the, the government center and courthouse. Probably that's not for us.
On, on, sorry, the third page?
On the very last page, the third page. There's cross-reference, national.
Oh, I see. To the government center and courthouse. What do we call, we just put town on?
Yeah. Or just town, no, wait, I mean, it's...
Okay. Next is Red Rock Church, Upper Town Park, a grandstand request for Good Friday, April 7th. This is duration.
Correct. I think this is their fourth or fifth year they have done an event in the upper park. I spoke to Mr. Rannick today, he's requesting use of the upper park football field, the bomb missile shelter, grandstands, bathrooms, if they're available, obviously. They're still winterized, but maybe by the first of April, they might be available.
I would say approve their request. Is there a second?
Yeah, sir.
Check seconds, all fair. All opposed. Motion approved. Excuse me, cancellation of all warrants.
So every year before March 1st, I stated the Indiana, we started Indiana 5-11-10-45, we can remove any checks that are two years older at the end of the preceding year. So I have a list here of five water utility meter deposits, made of refunds that were never cashed. The total that would revert back to the water operating fund would be $218.42. In the general fund, I have two checks. One was to look at the quilling for $100, and the other one was, in previous years, we used to write reimbursements to the police department for their penny cash, when they would go and send samples to the lab. And there was an outstanding check that was never, that was never cashed, so that would just go back into the digital fund. And that total was $123.42.
I need to approve the cancellation of warrants. Is there a second? I'm sorry. First or second, all fair. All opposed, motion passed. Do you have any signs or anything in the chamber?
Yeah, we just put a proof of the law.
Next is building permit number 979, Hilltop West Drive.
Um, sorry, on line? Yes. Sorry. Gives an existing line that was placed on the building prior to the purchase. So after Brandon purchased, the state tire marshal came in and told him that he needed a permit. He's not the one who built it, so he's been waiting for, it's at least nine months, maybe even longer, for the design release on that. Finally received it, so then he applied for a building permit. So he's kind of working, obviously backwards on this. We sent it to Tim, Tim, everything looks okay, and then I tried to explain that the structure itself isn't changing, he just needs the permit for the existing work that's already done.
Okay, looks like the construction release was released on January 31st.
Okay.
And our building permits now say that they expire within a year, so thank you, if you have a good one, who else would have that on there? Thank you, Jesse, good luck.
No problem.
I'll make a motion to approve the voting permit, and also just verify that, I believe the COA should be away since this was already pre-constructed.
So I didn't even make him fill one out, honestly, because it's pre-constructed, like you said, so I didn't even have him fill one out.
Is there a second?
Yeah, that's true.
Check seconds, all fair. All opposed, motion passed. So just... Do we have someone? Close to someone, just on the line?
I know.
Issue? Check mark an issue?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all we have, I mean, that's all, that's all that's on the agenda. I had a few announcements, but who else? You got anything?
No. Nothing.
I should have said this on John's air, and I apologize. I'm trying to figure out if I can have that before the, for the L-CHM, there is a survey that we need to kind of push out there, so I'll get it on the town's website and then the town's Facebook page, so it's just input from the community on what we can do for the L-CHM. So if everyone can share that for me, that'd be great.
Thank you. James and Chief Mitchell, do you have anything?
Just, just another day. This particular process, I'm not going to be hiring anyone out of this particular process. I'm probably going to be putting in on at a later date. I haven't decided which date that is going to be, two, three weeks from now. So just to give you a update.
Okay.
That's pretty much it. Well, I do have one question. In regards to last year's budget, was there anything budgeted for any, for a new car, sell a car, anything like that, are you aware of?
No, I think when we had talked about it, we put that on hold, because we were definitely not sure about the situation with the officers at that point. So I think we held off on the car and then held off on the vehicle equipment, but I did talk to you about the vehicle equipment, that maybe after we procure the body cams, we can look at that budget later and see where we're at, but probably a little bit further down.
So...
And are you working on getting me a quote for that?
For what?
The vehicle equipment, the update you needed for the vehicles?
I haven't got that yet.
Right.
What was the other thing? We did get our body cams, they're in my office. They're plugged in, they're charging, we're getting that Axon that's supposed to get with us. They're supposed to bring a trainer down. Trainer is on the process and how they operate and the way. So it's not a delay on my part. It's actually on Axon to bring their trainer down. So I don't know if there is a, have we paid, not paid? Is there something like that they might be waiting on? I reached out to them once before. They said that they will, they would get a trainer, but I'm still yet to hear anything.
I did contact straight because what you had brought me was just a payment and that was up to the full purchase of the body cams and we need to submit that grade for reimbursement. So he contacted the rep, was gonna get me a new invoice with a new claim. So as soon as he brings that to me, we can get that paid.
Right. Now, are we paying that out total? Or we only pay here? Because there was, what I, what I received was like nine hours over four or five years?
Right, we budgeted the full amount.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would rather just go ahead and make that payment, get the reimbursement for the body cams.
Well, I knew that you made a phone call and talked with it. So you will try to get that.
Okay. Perfect.
That's all.
Thank you. Just a couple things. So we had talked about the sewer line. It's going, sewer line, ready project, four point five million lately. I talked to Bill Schummer, who is extremely interested in having an executive joint session with commissioners and with key people to get everybody on the same page before the actual deadline to submit the complete package. And so he threw out some dates to me. And I said, I ask if you guys are available and are interested in a joint session.
Is that even possible?
With the commissioners?
Yeah. Does that fall within the scope of both committees in the executive session?
What, that meeting we had last year?
Didn't you have, didn't you have one?
Of Boeing?
For the SCI one project? You gotta join these?
That was, that was right, a first, or lease of it. So they, the pusher, it would be first thing or leasing.
Okay.
No.
So we just, if we, not opposed to that?
Okay.
So long as we have...
You're just asking if you'd be interested in attending or learning more about it?
Chuck, you may also need to ask before you will be here because there are some structures that you, I mean...
Yeah.
Well, then you need a way to get it on board on that, if you guys are gonna be there.
If, for instance, okay, as long as she gets it right, that's okay. If we're there, I'm okay with it.
Right.
But I'm not gonna do it unless the attorney says so, based off of, depending on how the attorney is doing.
Right. Okay, well, I just thought I'd ask to see if you're interested. Are you interested in learning more about this?
Yeah, I'd like to learn more about it.
Because we don't learn very much.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would.
One, one of the things I asked Bill is, I want, I think he asked us something in writing. So far, we've just had verbal conversations for four and a half million dollar project. And so he said he could work on that. And I said, I will come, see if it's possible to get together and have a joint executive session. Okay. Next, I just want to make the public know that at our last meeting, we voted to allow the department to hire another attorney to represent us if the insurance company would not represent us for the, for the two petitions for judiciary review. And they've since found out that our insurance company will be representing us. So we won't be hiring a separate attorney. Just want to make sure the public is aware of that. And there's supposed to be some one-way signals between fourth and progress. This project has been out there for a long time. They were supposed to come this weekend, and so maybe next week. So hopefully, this, this one way will be happening maybe next week. Just moving on. That's all I have. Are there any public comments? Hold on a second. Nancy's coming first.
Major's is bringing together our calendar. And for one of the events, we would like to use an invisible parking lot that's between the police station and Rose Rivers. So it says, if you're ready, we can run the agenda, go for the town castle, or just if we talk to, you know, the chief, and everything's okay, then we're gonna go.
Do we need like, that blocked off? We need it blocked off? So I would think at least with Brent?
I would agree if people coordinated with the chief and the street department to block out Axon. And if it becomes a...
I don't care if our major, roadkill, to coordinate with, not people, just Nancy. That sounds good to me. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Come on, Tony.
Okay. Now, this was, something that was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting was the fifty-five thousand dollar invoice that y'all received for the work that had been done at, I think, the Zimmer Building. And I guess I just wanted to express some concerns in that. It was done really without approval. The work was done without approval, without building permit. And I'd like to see some, looked into it a little bit further. Is that an invoice that should be paid since their road was done authorization to do the work? And we don't want to set a precedent that folks, you don't have to follow the guidelines in this town, just pay your invoices and go on. So that's just my concern. So we need to really take a look into that.
So, so that invoice was submitted by Gray Marks, who's the developer on the project. And he is actually responsible for all contractors and all the appointed contractors. It's not something that the town was even, it's not like we had to get it, bid it out, or, you know, go get all the bids for it. It's, we, the town hired Gray Marks to be in charge of it, kind of like a general contractor. And how he runs his portion of the project is really up to him. So you'd have to talk to him about that. I'm sorry.
Well, no, I appreciate your explaining that.
So he submits his invoices to the town, it's half his, it's half his.
Okay.
Because of the contract, it's not in there earlier. I mean, this is a year ago, took a year and a half. You don't actually have to submit a repossession certificate? And then we can submit to the bond trustee? Right.
Okay, Marty. My understanding, sorry, this, that, the heat that you know work was being done in the vote, so how, why is the heat here to justify paying the invoice for additional work done? When the revenue is supposed to be in by end of year and they're working without a net? And how do we know that the work that was done in there without a net doesn't have to be redone after you paid the fifty-five thousand dollar invoice?
I mean, I just...
It is ultimately taxpayer's dollars that's paying that invoice.
Right.
The invoice is for August.
So the town initially set aside two hundred thousand dollars for renovations and employed Gray Marks as the developer to make that happen first, so that we could have, at that point, is a police, the town, police department functioning out of that, out of that building. I don't know how else to answer it.
Well, who's submitted the invoice? That, that was going to be paid for fifty-five thousand?
It's from Zappel.
Okay. And who approved him to do the work?
Again, these are all questions for the developer. Because we paid him.
I know that Gray Marks said he didn't know anybody who's working in the building. Why is he here to try to answer questions from the public?
I think he's trying to get his project back on track. And he's doing everything he can to get us to finish long because this is a very, very small project for a developer of his stature. And so he's, and he's got Tom Louisville as his person here in town that's kind of orchestrating all the subs and giving them, and giving them electrical dogs and HVAC drones and all that. So we can submit the permit and again, just finish this project because that's really what the concern is.
I'm not letting him do the work. I'm, it's something that's in a very severe, it's not right. And I think it needs to be looked into before it's authorized to pay. Are the tab or this is the money to pay? That's my answer. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Derek Holt, the four point five million for the sewer line, do we have commitment from the other communities in the area for their funds to be transferred?
As far as I know, there's, I didn't know that thing. Except for the letter to the House, I was made to sign first meeting as that. I don't know anything else. That's why hopefully getting together with the key people will find out what, who's agreed to what, how's this project, what is it doing? I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't have any answers. But I've said that several times about this project.
What funds are you streaming out there?
For, because it's supposed to come from other communities, right? They're getting out there a portion of the ready grant funds. Do you pay for this? And it's the way that it's going to us.
It is.
Is that what you said? Yes. And is there any, was there anyone else, anybody around here?
Has it been approved, the money, is it approved? No, the, the application for this project has not been submitted to state yet. And that's why we wanted to take it first. Is the money there? As far as I know, SCR maybe has fifteen million dollars to spend on projects within the county, within the, out of the six counties. And this is just one of them. Probably came in before the sewer out there. I'm sorry.
Are we, are we getting the funds to build sewer out there? We have four point five million dollars earmarked by the ready board for this particular project, so long as it passes the state IEDC. So, so the communities that give out their funds? Their, their, there's no, there's no their funds. The state gave to the region. It's not us then, they, or, or the county here or etc. It is the region that was carrying fifteen million dollars to a regional initiative that will impact the region as a whole. So the board, the board directors then cited how this funds should be allocated now based off the projects that were submitted. They collectively cited that four point five million dollars, four point seven five million dollars should be allocated to Franklin County for two projects, the gas extension and sewer extension. That is earmarked approval, subject to approval from the local authorities, us, and IEDC that at least the guy that was set out by the regulation. As of today, they are still, they are still waiting for the IEDC approval. Once they have IEDC approval, we're coming back to this board with written down commitment. Our expectations are what their expectations are. We go from that. That's what they're at, with that earmarked money. It is not, nobody has been spent, it won't be spent. It's IEDC verifies that the project is intact, regardless of which, if it's worth it, or if it's in the county. Could I just say, I misspoke when I said that because they're supposed, like, they're already planning for projects to be done. Were those projects, like, pushed aside for the four point five? There was several, there were eight some projects submitted, not more. And they chose who wants this board, the highest, and the ones that were shut already, the ones that, they, as a collective board felt would impact the region most, to withdraw it right down.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have a list, but... Any other issues? Part of that. And I wanted to say that we can put any money in there, the machine funds, but the areas, and everything on that application, none of it is danger. But I do know that there's money that was, that they were trying to take away from other communities. Because I'm involved in one of those communities and they're trying to take the money from four of this place and that place. All the middle communities have their money, right? They have nothing for anyone to put anything into this. We are paying, they're giving to us. And who's pushing that? I don't know, it's not, and we don't talk about it, until we have the money at hand. And when we do start talking about it, we need to make sure people up on the hill are involved in that as well.
Are, are you, are you paying the money, should we have some? Is that...
No, I'm not, I'm not. They kind of suck and fought for that money. Or if they would have it now, they're gonna start, that's not doing what they're supposed to be doing with money. I don't, don't tell me about that, like, you don't know? Just, I'm, I know what's going on there. I'm saying, we didn't put anything in this, nothing. You're really good at it, and it's like he said, you're supposed to. The town's putting in zero dollars.
And you have to stay still for this board, huh?
Oh, no. I know, I, I throw under a roll that time. We agree this, we don't agree on anything. I'm just saying, don't be asking anybody, that's all I'm saying.
Is that a conspiracy that's on place to a line?
Oh, no. Not at all, believe.
Okay.
Believe.
Okay.
So, here in East Main, I'm Major Rofill. And incredibly...
If you please just address the word.
Oh, okay, sorry.
This is not, well, it's part of the thing, you need to address the word.
Okay. Thank you very much, Richard. And so Major Ruffin has been following the ready grant program in the economic impact on the Franklin County, Roffill, the downtown area, Roffill, as far as what our goals are for quality life and economic development. And so I know that the whole purpose of the ready grant was to encourage regions to work together. That's where the focus is. And as everybody submitted applications, everybody for regions submitted applications. And the Southeastern ready was awarded fifteen million dollars in this, the board that makes the decision that still have projects that are gonna be done. But they do have to submit to the state for approval. So I would say that everything that Curtis said is exactly what Major Ruffin's understanding is, that the Southeastern ready, very appropriate.
Thank you. Any other comments?
David, since the town, who's Gulf Force Town, and the state of Oklahoma, and public, will the primary correct for Gulf Force being a public on the town's side?
I'm sure we can, we can handle that, we can hear. We have it right here. I mean, you can ask Jamie, she can get one of them on there. I don't see why, I mean, if you can get it out with her, is there a reason why you want all of us?
Yeah, I would agree if, you know, if it's a cop here, cop here on the west side.
Yeah, okay, yeah. If you just, you know, Jamie's shipping it, it's public information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Any other business to come before the board?
I'm using it. I'll say.
All there? All of those, which motion approved? Please, Richard.